Okay. I'd like to call the special meeting of April 22nd order. It is six o'clock PM. If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God.
Indivisible, and liberate, and justice for all. Thank you all for joining us this evening. I'd like to turn it over to Bill to get things started. Bill, I think you're muted.
Here I am. Sorry about that. Thanks, Michelle. Good evening to everyone watching tonight and welcome to our budget presentation for the 2122 school year. The development of a school district's budget is a thoughtful, year-long process that includes careful, long-term planning. It's a challenging, multifaceted process, including budget preparation, presentation, review by the board and community members, and then formal budget adoption. The 2122 budget process has been exceedingly difficult as we've been navigating the COVID-19 pandemic. Despite the pandemic, our constant guiding principle in developing the budget has been steadfast, prudently investing and aligning resources to positively impact student experiences, while at the same time being fiscally responsible. Crafting fiscally responsible budgets requires creativity in both staffing and programming. In spite of the budgetary constraints imposed by the state, the district has been able to maintain a wide breadth of programs and supports. This has impacted our students in significant ways, and we're proud that many new families cite the breadth of programs and a range of supports as a reason for moving to our community. I'm really pleased to report that the proposed budget of $14 million, $32,840 is tax cap compliant, which represents a 1.6% tax levy increase. It keeps our staffing, academic, and extracurricular programs intact, achieving savings through attrition and efficiencies in the delivery of instructional programs. I'd like to thank Matt Crum, our business manager, and administrative team for their work in developing this budget. A lot of hours and discussions have gone into making this budget tax cap compliant, and we're really proud of that. So with that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Matt, who will talk you through the particulars of the budget. So, all yours, Matt.
Thank you, Bill. And bear with me one moment. I'm going to share a presentation. As that's coming up, I'd just like to echo Bill's sentiments and thank the team. This year, it was a challenge having to do this during all else that's going on. So thank you all for your assistance. Okay. Hopefully you can see the presentation. All right. Just a quick outline of what we're going to walk through tonight. We'll start sort of on the revenue side of things. And really, the first thing that's done in the process every year is the development and the calculation of our allowable tax levy increase through the the New York State tax cap. Second, I'm going to give a little update on the state budget, what was ultimately adopted last week, with some comparisons to what was proposed in January with the executive budget proposal. And for the most part, it's all good news. Then we'll get a little bit into the budget and talk about some of the particulars. And then, before we talk about the next steps in closing out this budget process, I want to spend some time talking about some federal stimulus monies that the district is in line to receive over the next couple of years. That was a big component of the state budget that was adopted last week. And then lastly, it'll be the next steps as we navigate the next couple of weeks in preparation of our vote. One other thing, in talking with Bill, this is a relatively short presentation. There's only about 10 slides. I'm going to work my way through it. And then, once through the presentation, we can stick around as long as we need to, to answer questions both from the board members. You know, you can ask questions of any of us, and then also from the community and the comments on the live stream. So, without further ado, I will zip through this and go from there. So March 1st, we have to submit our tax levy allowable levy limit to the state comptroller's office. And this year, our allowable tax levy within the confines of the tax cap is 1.60%. Every year, I find myself putting out this reminder. Since its inception, there's often a sort of a misunderstanding or this belief that the tax cap is a 2% tax cap. It's actually the lesser of 2% or the statewide consumer price index calculated for the prior year. So that is a factor that all districts start out with as a baseline. And unfortunately, this year, because of what's going on economically, that statewide CPI is 1.23%. So every school district in the state, rather than starting out at 2%, is starting out at 1.23% as a baseline. The next key component is a tax-based growth factor, and this factor is district-specific. And this is a factor that every district is provided with from the Office of Real Property. And this is to factor in additions to the tax base in the last year. So this is any physical additions to the tax base, new construction. It does not account for increase in assessments or changes in existing properties. It's only new physical additions to the tax base. There's a couple other minor components, pilot payments, which we currently have no change in. We do have one pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes. Good Nature Brewery does have a pilot agreement with the county industrial development agency. So we do have to factor that in, but there's no change there. So it doesn't really impact our levy. If the district has any outstanding courts or legal judgments pending, there's an adjustment for that. Happy to report that we don't have any of those, so that's a good thing. And then the last, most significant one is the capital levy exclusion. So in addition to that 1.23% in that additional growth, the local share of payments for capital improvements that are approved through separate referendum, buses, capital projects, because they're voter-approved separately, the local share for those payments are exempt from the tax levy calculation. So our tag, our capital exclusion is about $272,000. That's somewhat consistent, even though we have new debt service that's going to hit the books next year and new building aid. We do have the ability to manipulate that a little bit with timing of payments and the amount of principal and interest payments that we make. We felt that it was prudent this year because of the circumstances to not really tinker with that and keep the allowable levy sort of in check and as low as possible because of what's been going on. So that's where we get to our 1.6%. And as Bill mentioned, everything to follow in the proposed budget is within that tax levy increase of 1.6%. Here's just a brief history. You'll see, this is the last 10 years, really, since the inception of the tax cap. 2013, 14, you'll see a little bit of a increase there. That was due to a really significant increase in employer contributions to employee retirement systems in the state, ERS and TRS. Those payments were exempt from the calculation. So despite being just about 4.5%, that was tax cap compliant. We did have one year in 1516 where we did have a tax cap override. Our levy increase was 3.73%. That year was a really screwy year and a bit of an anomaly for us. Our allowable levy was actually negative because of we had some debt services that was expiring, and we didn't have any new capital projects in the hopper at that time. So it wasn't override. It was 3.73%, but our allowable that year was actually negative. So that was sort of an anomaly. And then in the last five years, you can see we've been really, real modest increases between, basically between 1 and 3%. So just a little historical perspective on tax levy increases. So the budget status, and when I say budget status, really, I'm referring to what happened in New York State in the last three months. The outlook was pretty dire in January, when the governor came out with his executive budget proposal. The executive budget proposal was based on $6 billion in federal monies that were coming from the federal government to New York State in earmark toward P-12 public education. There were a couple of things, three really, that would have impacted us significantly that ultimately went away in what was adopted last week in the legislative proposal, which is great news. The first of which was foundation aid being frozen. So the governor's budget proposal had no increases to foundation aid. So for Hamilton, that's our bread and butter when it comes to state aid. That is our operating aid. That is our base annual aid that we receive in excess of $3.5 million. So when that's frozen, that's not good news for us. In New York State, the state aid, the foundation aid formula dates back, I believe, to 2007. The existing formula is that old. Under that current formula, roughly 70% of the districts are receiving less state aid in the form of foundation aid than the formula says they should be receiving. About 30% are overfunded. Unfortunately for us, we are one of those districts that's overfunded. So based on the existing formula, we're receiving more state aid than what the formula says we should receive. We've talked about this at the board level. This is what makes advocacy difficult. Many districts, many of our neighbors are pushing for foundation aid increases. They say things like, let the formula run, or fully fund us based on the formula. Well, as being an overfunded district with 30% of the other districts in New York State, we have to take a different approach. The good news is, this current budget that was adopted, there are really unprecedented increases to foundation aid, to the tune of about $1.4 billion statewide. For us, we're going to see a 3% increase, which is a little over $100,000. Just to give you some perspective, let me back up one second. So also, within the proposal is a plan to fully fund foundation aid within the next three years. And Jen, this is probably what the topic of discussion was at your NISBA event, when they really dove into foundation aid. There is a plan to fully fund foundation aid by the end of the 2023-24 school year, which is great news for schools. For us, what we hope is that there's some sort of hold harmless provision that we receive an increase annually despite already being fully funded. For next year, which is year one of the three-year phase in, there's 62 districts that'll receive between 2% and 3% increase in foundation aid, two being the minimum. There's 211 districts statewide receiving 3%, which were in that group. There's 136 districts between 3% and 5%. And then there's 265 districts seeing an increase in their foundation aid of greater than 5%. So this is unprecedented in terms of, in recent memory, of money being pumped into foundation aid. We are being cautioned that this is part of this year's budget proposal. It is a three-year plan. It could change next year with the state budget. So we're cautiously optimistic that we're going to continue to see foundation aid being paid attention to in the next couple of budget cycles for the state. Again, this is interesting, just to give you an idea of comparing, to give you a sense of how much, what a difference this is with regard to foundation aid. For this current year, so the 2021 school year, based on last year's budget, there were 194 districts that received less than 1% of an increase in foundation aid. 294, less than 2%. And then there were only 36 that received over 5%. So you can see the difference. There's from 36 to 264, receiving over 5% increase. So a lot of money in foundation aid, which is great for K-12 education statewide, and the fact that there was a 3% increase for us, and we're kind of held harmless, is great for us as well. The other thing that the governor's proposal was going to implement was a local district funding adjustment, the LDFA. And we kind of laughed and called it the GEA Part Two. And what was being proposed was that any monies that were coming in in the form of federal stimulus dollars to public schools, your foundation aid would be reduced by that amount. So essentially, the state would be using federal monies to plug the state budget gap and doing that through a reduction in aid to school districts. I'm going to spend a little more time on federal stimulus monies in a couple of slides, but the good news is there is no funding adjustment for the federal funds. So at this point, it appears over the course of the next couple of years, we will receive significant amounts of federal money. So that's good news. Couple other things, just sort of independently, there was a proposal to consolidate expense-driven aids like BOSI's aid, transportation aid, amongst others. That was nixed, which was a good thing. And then also some significant changes to the STAR program that would have been sort of a shifting in how the money flowed, and it could have resulted in over $1 billion in reductions in STAR reimbursements, which ultimately would have hurt schools. So that was also nixed. So that was good news as well. So the proposed 2122 budget, I really tried to break this down into the real key components to kind of give you a sense of what this boils down to when we get into coming up with a balanced budget. On the revenue side, there's really, there's two primary revenue sources. There's state aid, the majority of which is foundation aid, and then there's the tax levy. So for the 2122 budget, there's a proposed tax levy increase of 1.6%, as we mentioned. That equates to about $123,000. So less than 1% of the budget, but $123,000 is 1.6% of the levy. Our foundation aid increase of 3% is a little over $100,000. And again, we haven't seen 3%, and I couldn't tell you how long on foundation aid, so that's good news. The next piece, and this is going to be a little bit misleading, but it will show up. It's not on our aid run now, but it will be eventually. Is we're going to see a significant increase, expected increase in building aid, because we're going to make our first round of payments on our new debt service for our capital project. So we're going to see a significant increase in building aid. You'll see on the next slide, that's really offset by new principal and interest payments for our capital project. And then the last one is the use of fund balance in reserves. So combined appropriated fund balance and interfund transfers out of the reserves of $190,000 to make things balance. Now, probably, I might toggle back and forth a little bit between these two slides, or at least reference them verbally. You can see on the expenditure side of things. And this is not new. This is nothing unusual for us at HCS, or probably any school district around the state. Our biggest cost driver continues to be employee benefits. So you can see in the proposed 2122 budget, employee benefits going up about $170,000. The bulk of that is a 5% premium increase in our health insurance premiums. Just for some perspective, you can see that the tax levy increase alone is not enough to cover the increase in employee benefits. The second piece is special programs, a little over $100,000, which again, for some context, is about the equivalent of the increase in our foundation aid. We have two students who are going to be attending new programs outside of the district that are costly. They're great programs for kids. It's been done through the CSE, through Mr. Ellis's office, and this is a great opportunity for our kids. But these are kids that are in high-cost placements. Our BOSI CTE, and this is, we could probably spend an entire meeting going over BOSI CTE. CTE stands for Career and Technical Education. This is primarily juniors and seniors that take career and tech ed at BOSI's. Well, I think we do have a couple 10th graders that go to the introductory program. We've seen an increase in the last couple of years in the number of students that are taking career and tech ed at BOSI's. The way in which we pay for those students is based on a three-year moving average of our enrollees relative to the total attendance in the CTE program of the nine components at BOSI's. Right now, or for next year, we have, in our three-year calculation, we have a cohort of 14 kids that is no longer part of the calculation, and I believe 32 kids that is part of the calculation. So based on that calculation of the three-year average, we're paying a greater share. So we're seeing an increase for next year of about $60,000 for the number of kids that are attending the CTE program. That, you know, that's on here because it's not typical. It's not something that we see on here all the time. It's usually much more, not such big swings up and down. But if enrollment, if we do have unusual enrollment trends, either big increases or decreases, until it kind of plays its way through that three-year moving average, we can see this, and we are seeing it next year. And then you can see the new principal and interest payments on the debt service for the capital project. And again, going back, you can see it's basically offset by the building aid expense. So really, a net, no net impact on the budget. They sort of offset each other. In terms of what's included in the budget, so how are we able to keep everything preserved with a 1.6% tax levy increase despite all these things, rising expenses? First and foremost, is we had, or will have, six retirements this year, June 30th, from our faculty. Five in the elementary, one in the secondary. Five of those six vacancies will be replaced with new hires. So when we get into the three-part budget, we look at some numbers in a minute. I want you to remember this, because we're recognizing a considerable amount of savings through attrition with these six retirements. First and foremost, not replacing one position, but also with wages and salaries of the five that are being replaced. We anticipate hiring people at a lower pay scale than those that are retiring, which is normal practice.
Sorry, do we know which position is not being replaced?
I'm going to wait on that, and I will let the instructional leaders answer that at the end. I think I know, but I don't want to say it. I will let them answer that. We will also be returning some staffing to the budget that we did not currently have in the budget for this year. First is a .5 FTE social studies teacher. A year ago now, we had a social studies teacher retire that was only replaced with a half-time teacher. That position will be returning to full-time. So that's an addition of a half-time FTE. We'll be returning to a full-time elementary principal, as an elementary principal. This year, as you know, Mrs. Thomas has been working on assignment, fulfilling the duties of the elementary principal. But from a budgeting standpoint, that position of an elementary principal was reinstated back into the budget. Return to a full-time director of facilities. Again, we've had a full-time director of facilities much of this year, but a year ago now, because of where we were in the search process, we didn't have to budget for a full year's worth of that director of facilities, because we knew we wouldn't be making that hire on July 1. Now that we have Randy in place, we have to make sure we fully budget for that year-round, full-time position. Probably the biggest change in terms of how we're doing things is a move to AM and PM pre-K. So under normal circumstances, we'd have two AM cohorts. We're going to move to an AM and a PM, two sections of pre-K. It's going to give us some flexibility with staffing, and it's also because of anticipated lower-than-usual enrollment in our pre-K, which, again, we can talk about at the end. And really, bottom line, there's no staff or program reductions that's, you know, as a result of budgetary restrictions. So, you know, we feel that our program is still in place. We may be doing some things a little bit differently, but we've able to keep things in place and recognize savings through attrition and through different efficiencies. So the actual numbers, we look through this. And this is, what you're seeing is the sort of the mandated three-part format that we have to report the budget in, the three components being program, administration, and capital. And as is the case with all school districts, your program is going to make up somewhere between 70 and 80% of the budget. Even with a big increase in our capital component with the new debt service, I believe this shakes out to about 73% of the budget is in the program. You'll see only a slight increase in the program, so less than a 1% increase. And again, this is because of the attrition with the retirements. This is because of the six retirements, only replacing five. The change in the salaries of those that are being replaced. There's a couple other things, too, that we've, you know, we have some support services from BOSI's that we're able to scale back, that falls under the program piece, and just some other efficiencies with some RIC services that is ultimately the cause of that minimal increase. The administrative budget, again, you can see a little bit, is a percentage a little higher than usual. Again, mainly attributed to the return of the elementary principal position as an administrative position. And then the last one, the capital piece. If you recall, it's about $440,000 of additional principal and interest payments for the new capital project. So that is why there's such a big increase there. The remainder of the capital budget, which is primarily buildings and grounds, is relatively flat. So sort of the bottom line is a budget-to-budget increase of 4.76% with a tax levy increase of 1.6. Now, you might look at that and think, geez, that seems odd. How is that possible? Well, if you remember, the majority of that increase is due to the capital project principal and interest payments, but there's also corresponding building aid that's going to come in with that. If we take out the increase to the debt service, that $440,000, the budget-to-budget increase would be roughly 1.5%, 1.4%. So really, if we didn't have the capital project, we'd be looking at an increase in spending for operations of about 1.5% with a tax levy of 1.6%. So the reason for that bigger budget-to-budget increase is strictly based on the capital project. So federal stimulus monies, and this is exciting, but yet something that we need to sort of proceed cautiously with. As part of the adopted budget on all of our state aid runs, like I said, in January, the executive proposal was based on $6 billion. It ended up being closer to 12 or 13 billion, I believe, that was dedicated to P-12 public education, targeted monies and federal monies. So the CRRSA is the, I'm going to have to cheat, Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplementary Appropriations Act, and the American Rescue Plan Act, two separate legislative bills that will provide this funding. A couple of things that we need to be careful of. All of the funds that are going to come to school districts through these two sources are to be treated as grants and aid. So what that means is they're not general fund dollars. So they're not going to come to us in the form of like foundation aid does, or BOSI's aid, or TransAid. These are grants and aid that all districts will have to plan for, apply for, be approved for, incur expenditures, and then be reimbursed. So those of you that have been around for a couple of years, if you remember the SSAE grant that we had, similar to that, that was also a grant and aid. So with that comes a lot of work, but there's certainly, we anticipate, going to be a lot of opportunity. But there's certainly, we anticipate going to be a lot of opportunity. There's not a lot of guidance out right now on it. Some of the advocacy groups, like school boards, business officials, have put together some things, trying to answer some FAQs. You know, and you can see here, I have some of the, the questions down. You know, how are you gonna have to spend the money? How long are the funds gonna be around? What will the process be? We know a little for each of those questions. We believe that there is, there are certain areas where those funds are gonna have to be targeting. One of the buzzwords we keep hearing is to address the loss of learning during the pandemic, or safely returning to in-person instruction. We anticipate, anticipate being able to use these funds for summer programming and after-school programming, which is wonderful. We've already had preliminary discussions. We do know that to access these funds, though, there's gonna be, we think, a lengthy process. So there's gonna be a, a planning process where we have to consult with all stakeholders, post a plan on our website, have co, a public comment period, those types of things. So we'll be prepared once we know what we need to do, because we want to start accessing this as early as the summer if we can. We anticipate that this funding will be available for multiple years. There's some question of whether or not it'll be three years or four years, which is great news, because while it doesn't supplant monies in the general fund, while it doesn't flow directly into the general fund, it's certainly an opportunity for us to do more in some areas, but also get creative in using that monies to help supplement what's going on for the next few years, and certainly throughout the budget process. You can see that it's a pretty hefty amount of money. Our two allocations under both of those federal programs totals about $1.6 million. So exciting stuff. At this point, it doesn't appear to be money that the, the state is gonna come up with any kind of adjustment and reduce our, our state aid by that amount. So good news, cautiously optimistic. We've already had to have convers, already started to have conversations, and we plan to be prepared as soon as we know more. So that, you know, that is important with regard to the budget. Those monies are not going to be part of the budget conversation for the next four years. It's not gonna be included in the general fund budget, but certainly will have a significant impact. And then lastly, our next steps. So, you know, again, regard, the state budget was a little late this year. They had been on time for a number of years in a row. It was late this year. Our timeline doesn't change. Everything sort of works backwards off of the May 18th vote. By the end of Business Monday, we have to submit our property tax cap report card, which is on the agenda to be approved tonight. After the budget is adopted, we'll take care of all that. Tomorrow, as long as everything goes okay, we hope to get a draft up to the print shop for our budget newsletter, and hope to get that mailed out early in the week, roughly May 4th to May 6th. Wednesday, May 12, 6:00 PM, our public budget hearing, which is where, you know, it's another half hour of me spewing out all this good stuff, but in more detail. Once we have an adopted budget, that has to be done between six and 14 days prior to the vote. Because of the budget being a little late this year and being sort of under the gun with these timelines, we felt it was best to push that back as far as we could. That way, our district residents could get their hands on the newsletter, be prepared to participate with any questions they might have, give us time to answer questions. And then the vote on the 18th. So as of right now, knock on wood, it'll be more of a normal vote, sort of like it was two years ago and before. We don't have to do what we did last year. So that's it for the presentation. At this point, we'll open it up for questions. I know Corey had one. And then, you know, whoever, and we'll, we'll address those. So thank you for the time, and look forward to hearing your reaction.
Thank you, Matt. I'll answer Corey's question. So our current sixth grade has 58 students. So last year, we, we moved one of our elementary staff members up to the sixth-grade staff to help balance some of our, our class loads. With, with that class, sixth-grade class now rising to seventh grade, that frees up one of those sixth-grade teachers to return back to the elementary, which will allow us then to only hire five out of the six retirees.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Hey, Matt, thank you for that presentation. I'm happy with it. It seems fiscally responsible. Paige, I believe, two of your slide on key revenue increases. Could you just explain a little bit more the use of fund balance and reserves? Explain that a little bit more for me, please.
Sure. So, so every, every year, the budget is very fluid. There's a, a state statutory limit of 4% of, of fund balance, unrestricted fund balance that districts are allowed to carry one year to the next. You can't exceed 4%. If you do, I mean, we did one year, we got a wrist slap, we had to get down under 4% after that. So there's multiple kinds of fund balance. The 4% is the statutory limit of, of unrestricted fund balance. The appropriated fund balance is basically your surplus or your excess funds from one year being appropriated to next year's budget. And that combined with inter-fund transfers out of our restricted fund balance, which is our reserves, will total $190,000 in next month's, next year's budget, which is 60,000 more than usual. One of the things that we're going to experience in June, our health consortium, because of the pandemic, recognized much lower than usual claims, and that's typical for all health plans. So in, in June, we're gonna be getting a dividend from our consortium, a premium dividend. So we're, we're comfortable with having that level of appropriated fund balance and use of re, reserves to, to balance the budget. So that's one of the things that's gonna help us be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. So our reserve funds will be in a healthy place.
Yeah, yeah, because in addition to appropriating funds to next year's budget, some of those funds will also go back to replenish some of the reserves. As an example, with six retirements, we have a reserve to compensate retiring employees for their unused leave time. We have a reserve for that. With six people retiring, that reserve's gonna take quite a hit. So, you know, that's a reserve that we'll be looking to fund in the future to prepare for more upcoming retirements. So.
Right, makes sense. Yeah, well, thank you for explaining that a little bit more. That's really the only question I have. Again, good job.
Thank you.
I know the discussions on the use of the, the, the 1.6 million of federal funds is still preliminary. Just wondering if you thought about any sort of social programs or psychological programs to help kids get back? I'm sure that's been on the table, but if you'd speak to that.
Yeah, as Matt alluded to, Corey, we, we had a preliminary meeting to start talking about summer programs and after-school programs, and part of our social-emotional needs for our students and faculty, developing programs and working with some, some local organizations to help navigate us through that. So yes, that will be part of our programming and part of the funding that that will allow us to do.
There's not anything on the chat as of yet, but for those that are watching, if you have anything to add to the chat, please do so now.
You okay if I stop presenting? I take that down.
Has anyone gotten a feel for how the actual vote is going to go this year? Will it be like normal years in person, or how is that gonna be done?
Yeah, that, that's what we're expecting, Travis. I mean, there were some, there were some extensions and some changes regarding the absentee process in terms of the qualifying
Factors?
Reasons behind absentee requests, but as of right now, no, we're, we're planning on, I mean, we'll have things set up, obviously, to ensure social distancing. And, you know, fortunately for us, just having one polling place and not a huge turnout in, in over the eight hours, I think we'll be okay. I, I don't know, Debbie, if you have anything to add, but I, we're, we're confident. I think we're gonna, we're gonna be in good shape.
I guess, I guess the only thing I worry about for that is the pickup time from school and congestion in the parking lot for that. So just something to think about, maybe?
Yeah, that's a good one. Yeah, we may, you know, if we have to throw somebody else out there, you know, halfway down the driveway and help alleviate any congestion, we can certainly do that. But that, that's a good point. Thank you. Haven't thought of that.
Helen, you look like you're pondering pretty good your question. Well, it seems like you covered it pretty well, Matt. We usually hit you guys with some pretty good questions, and tonight, we're pretty quiet. So that means good things, good, good news from the state and federal, which is a good thing, and good planning on the part of the administration to coming into tonight's meeting. So thank you for that. I'm not trying to annoy anybody, but if anybody has anything else, please feel free.
Yeah, just, just again, and I'll, just for me in closing, again, to thank the team. You know, Bill, Bill and Kevin have been around a while. So this has become sort of habitual to them, but really specifically Mark and Heather. You know, this, it, it's the new norm for Bill and Kevin and I and Chris, you know, those that have been doing this for a while, but for Mark and Heather to be thrown into, you know, Mark started last year. You think about what, what Mark's tenure as a, as a principal has consisted of in, in the two budget cycles. It's, it's brutal. And, you know, for Heather to be thrown right into the mix, and to, to be forced to use, you know, the, the, you know, to, to, to be as creative as we have to be and keep this doing, it, it's really, it, it's really remarkable what, what these guys do every day, and I'm, I'm thankful to be able to work with them. And, you know, our meetings get, get amusing sometimes. They get pretty, we get pretty riled up, but all, all in, all with a common goal and a common interest of doing what's best for our kids. So it, it really is, it's productive, and I, I really commend them, especially Mark and Heather, for really adapting and jumping right into the thick of things. So and Bill and Kevin and Chris, you guys are old vets at this. You've been through it enough times, but thank you all.
Ben, though, you know, with Kevin's new role of PPS, and the challenges we've had in the past in this, in that department, he's done a tremendous job through COVID and through the challenges that we've had in the past. And, you know, part of our administrative restructuring has had huge benefits, both in the elementary and in the director of special ed. And, you know, Chris, from a technology standpoint, throughout COVID, this team has just done tremendous, tremendous work, and they're terrific leaders, and the, the leadership they've provided to our, to our buildings, to our district have been tremendous. And, you know, I echo the work of, of them and how that has affected our staff, and the, the great work that our staff, you know, faculty staff, support staff, everybody involved in this district, throughout this pandemic, has done terrific work. And we're all exhausted. We're all, we've been challenged on a day-to-day basis, but we show up every day, and I just, I applaud everybody for their hard work and commitment to the, to the students in our district, you know? We have really embraced the mission of educating every student every day, and that has started with the support of the board and the leadership of the, the administration, and the hard work of our faculty and staff every single day to accomplish that mission. So, you know, I can't say enough good things about, about our district. So thank you to everybody.
There are still no questions online, so we're gonna move along with that. One more chance for the board. Anybody have anything else before I move on? I don't want to hurt anybody. So, no, all right. That brings us to, we're kind of in 2.2. While we were asking questions, I had a chat open for the community. Community hasn't said anything at this point. So it moves us to 2.3, which is a recommended action. So I made a motion to adopt the 2021, 2022 proposed budget with, and it's expenditure plan not to exceed $14,032,840, which includes all projected BOSI services, and to approve a bus proposition for two passenger buses at an estimated maximum cost of $180,000. I'll second. Any discussion? We really just kind of had that. So what else we'll ask?
Thanks, everybody, for all the hard work.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, thank you. You, you, you've kept this district fiscally sound for, for many years, and it's been a challenge throughout this pandemic. So I appreciate your hard work, and you keep us all on our toes. So thank you for that.
Are you guys there? Okay, I froze, so I'm sorry. I'm gonna ask for the vote again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, motion carried. I need a motion to accept the following nomination petition as a candidate for the Board of Education for a three-year term beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2024, as recommended by the superintendent. The candidate is G. Corey Kukloos.
I'll move. A second.
Any discussion? Thanks for running again. Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All abstain. I know too much about that guy.
Corey, thank you for all you do for us. Appreciate it.
Thanks for, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you for throwing your hat in the ring again. Ellen? So Michelle asked me to go ahead with 2.5. I need a motion to appoint Michelle Jacobson as chairperson of the annual meeting on May 18, 2021.
I'll move.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think I can say aye to this. I don't know. Debbie, I can vote on that one, right? There's no reason not to.
I can say aye, yeah.
Okay, aye. Thanks, Ellen. A motion to approve the property tax report card?
I'll move.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. And I need a motion to adjourn the meeting at 6:48 PM.
Move.
A second.
That was the quickest move ever, Corey. Well done. Any discussion? I just want to really thank Bill and Matt and all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Have a great night, everybody.
Thanks, and good one.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.
Good night.